Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the special meeting of the Morro Bay City Council Thursday, December 19th, 2024 at the Veterans Memorial Hall. We have two items before us this evening. Before we start, I will ask the city clerk to establish a quorum, and I will call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Echols?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Landrum?
Here.
And Councilmember LaPae?
Here.
Mayor Wixson?
Here. Thank you. With that, we have some speaker slips. I would ask everyone to keep it brief if possible this evening. I will start with Janice Peters, followed by Linda Winters, and after that, please feel free to come up.
Hello, Janice Peters, Morro Bay resident. On item 1B, I just want to say it would absolutely be wonderful to have Rob Schultz back handling our legal situations for us. He did an incredible job when he was our city attorney, and I would welcome him back anytime. Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Linda Winters, and let me welcome Mr. LaPae and Mr. Echols. I didn't say it the last time I spoke. I did not realize that the Rob Schultz on the paper was the same Rob Schultz I've known for a lot of years, and he was very beneficial to all of the residents in the mobile home parks. He helped to write the mobile home rent stabilization ordinance here for the residents here in Morro Bay. So I'm hoping that he will continue on with that type of care. And just happy holidays to everybody. I couldn't be happier. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Public comment is open.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name's Jeremiah O'Brien, and I just wanted to come up and welcome Rob, I hope, back to the city, if that's to be decided on. Just glad to see him come full circle and return here. Glad the city welcomed him back. So Rob's an old friend. But anyways, I did want to mention another thing, too, is I was going to ask you to reconsider the number on the board for the Harbor Advisory Board. And I don't think just because the other groups would function as -- I think we need seven to function. The other groups might be able to do that with five, but I think in times of a lot of work, that board turns out a lot of work, and I think seven is a number that wouldn't overwork five. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP?
Madam Mayor, we have one person that's raised their hand. Judy Lynn, I'm going to ask you to unmute your system.
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I ask that you vote to terminate the city's agreement with Burke Williams and Sorenson. During Attorney Newmeyer's representation, our city lost one of our most valuable assets, the option to purchase the oceanfront 100-acre power plant property for $1. Mr. Newmeyer failed to execute sound advice that was written within the power plant property's appraisal. This advice was to obtain current toxic assessment and remediation reports. This resulted in devaluation of the property and trading it away for an easement that we would have easily secured through the judicial system. Within the 2021 Vistra MOU, the city references a May 2014 article in the New York Times for assessing the $30 million needed to remove the power plant facility. There is zero mention of any kind of official real-time assessment. Public records requests have shown nothing site-specific was done. It appears a Phase II assessment was never done. Also, within this same article, one realizes how the monetary cost for cleanup fear tactics was born. Quoting from the 2014 article, Cindy Edwards, the president of the Morro Bay Merchants Association, said the plant closing was a huge loss of revenue for us. She added, "We're a small community, under 11,000 people. How are we going to sustain what we've been doing without that money?" These fear tactics were repeated over and over with zero concrete assessment or remediation costs to back them up. This led to exchanging the opportunity to be free of toxic industry for a money grab generated from new, continued toxic industry. DTSC reports that PG&E retains liability for property cleanup. To start that process, we must litigate PG&E's deed restrictions. There are protections in force that protect us from being an industrial dumping ground. Once this is done, DTSC will help execute the cleanup process at PG&E's expense. Please approve and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Robert Schultz for interim city attorney services so we can begin the process to rid our city of toxic PG&E leftovers. Thank you so much, and I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a wonderful, restful break.
Madam Mayor, we do have one more person on Zoom. The person on the iPhone, I'm allowing you to talk. If you press star six, it will release you. Oh, you need to unmute your microphone?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Thank you. This is Jeff Heller, calling from Nashville, Tennessee, where I'm visiting my four-month-old granddaughter. I'm amazed I got through. Council and Mayor, I have some questions about this item. Obviously, the amount we've been spending on legal fees is extraordinary compared to what we're used to spending. I guess what I'm missing is, what is the reason that the termination is being made, was made, so quickly and so promptly? I don't know what the findings were that made this decision so important and so urgent. Maybe they're confidential for legal reasons, but as a member of the people of Morro Bay, I'm just wondering, why was this such an urgent thing? Was it a disastrous actions by the attorney? Were they double billing? Were they doing something so drastic that they had to be immediately terminated at a time when we've lost multiple staff members over the last few years? One of the few members of continuity was the attorney from A&amp;W, and now he's gone. And I welcome Rob Schultz back. I've heard a lot about him, but I still am very concerned about the loss of institutional knowledge, which has been developed over the past eight years on a number of critical issues. And that combined with the staff turnover and with the lack of understanding of why this was such a fire drill. I don't understand it. I don't know what the process was that got you to this point. And then my last point is, who's responsible for managing the fees, the expenses of our city attorney? Is that something council should be doing, or should our city manager be monitoring that? Or should our department heads be monitoring that? I suggest for the future that the council develop policies and procedures so that any consultant, whether it's the city manager or any other consultant, be closely monitored and define whose responsibility is to manage their budget. You can't just hire consultants and let them do what they want to do and bring people on. Who's responsible? These kinds of things need to be managed by staff, not by council. I wish you well going forward. I would love to have an explanation about why this became such an urgent decision that had to be made so quickly when we could have kept the attorney on for another six months, transferred the institutional knowledge in a reasonable and timely fashion without losing it. Anyway, have a great meeting. I'm having a blast in Nashville with my granddaughter. I'm onto New York tomorrow to visit my other two. Happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.
AGP, are there any more raised hands?
No, ma'am. That completes the raise hands on Zoom.
Thank you. Last offer for public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We have two items on the agenda this evening. Item 3A, consideration of termination of the agreement with Burke Williams and Sorenson LLP for city attorney services. City Manager Kimball.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council met on Monday, December 16th, in their closed session to discuss the performance evaluation of a city attorney who is from Burke Williams and Sorenson LLP. Mayor and council also discussed the potential disciplinary action or termination of the city attorney at the same meeting. Mayor and council also, lastly, discussed appointment of an interim legal service at the same meeting. Following the meeting, staff was instructed to proceed with a termination of agreement with Burke Williams and Sorenson, so to allow for a successor agreement. And that's why we're here today. And this item was brought before the city council for your official consideration and votes.
Thank you very much, City Manager Kimball. Questions to my right? Questions to my left? Any questions?
I have a question. So are we going to be making a motion, or are we just--
There will be two separate motions.
But are we just voting on this recommended action, or is this a motion?
Not yet.
But it will be. Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Right now, we're questions. No questions. I'll go to comments to my right on item 3A.
You know, to respond to Jeff a little bit, Mr. Heller, I was an employer for almost 40 years. When you have a termination, sometimes the best thing to do is just cut it and do it as quickly as possible and move on. And I think that's, in my rationale of why we did it so quickly, that's the reason. I think this has been discussed before, and we want to go into a different direction. We want to look at a different type of legal representation. So rather than prolong the situation, I'm kind of glad that we're here, to be honest with you. So I just want to say that.
Thank you.
And I would add on to my colleague here, and to respond to Mr. Heller, that this wasn't an urgent decision, I don't believe. This had been discussed within council, you know, since I've been on council, but there was never a consensus to put the city attorney out to, position out to an RFP. It's been a long time since that has happened, and to be financially responsible, it seems like something that you would want to do. You know, there's other issues personally that I felt were, I felt like we could, we kind of had been let down by the prior legal team with, as the caller, Mrs. Setting, said, with the property agreement, the dollar option to purchase the power plant property, I think that was, you know, just devastating mistake that the city has incurred, all to put in a sewer, you know, IPR line that is questionable whether it's even going to work. So I think it's just, this has been a long time, to answer, Mr. Heller, this has been a long time coming. It wasn't urgent at all. And, you know, I feel like it was, you know, to really be responsible, the amount that we paid that legal firm in the last year is $1 million, nearly $1 million, just shy. And for, if there's 10,000 residents in Morro Bay, that's $100 per resident, you know, and that includes children. So that's what we're all paying. I think that's just way too high of an amount. It's absurd.
Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'd like to speak to where I was going into tonight's meeting. I was unsure after Monday afternoon session, and closed session, and I, too, was still trying to wrap my mind around the urgency of this decision, especially after the November 16th meeting and the decision of council. But I wanted to say tonight that after further consultation and discussion with staff, including costs and direction of this council, that I am comfortable tonight with this decision for the desire to terminate BWS and explore other options. I do want to wish Mr. Newmeyer well as a new partner of BWS and his new adventure there, and moving forward with BWS just was not in the cards for us at this moment.
Thank you, Councilmember Echols.
Thank you. I will mention that I'm in agreement with all of the comments that have been made by my colleagues this evening. Speaking to the process in the November 16th meeting, I will say that I had a huge problem with the process that occurred at that meeting. Specifically, there was one person in the room that had a conflict of interest in presenting his case to the city of Morro Bay for changing legal firms. We didn't even have a representative from the new legal firm in the room. And the one person that was in the room at that time that would benefit from the change was Attorney Chris Newmeyer. So I had a big problem with that process, and frankly, that contributed to a loss of confidence in the city attorney as well. I'll add that this is not being done in haste. This is being done with due consideration, due diligence, and I can say, in my case, I believe we're taking swift and decisive and appropriate action, not hasty action. And I believe moving forward in this path will place the city in the most advantageous position in terms of receiving legal advice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Not to belabor all the comments and be repetitive, I'm going to agree with all the comments that were up here, which is what drove us to this place right now. I'm certainly willing, at any point in time, for anyone in the community who has questions or concerns about, as Mr. Heller expressed, the reasons we got there within the capacity of what it can share, because, yes, Mr. Heller, you are correct. Some of it is personnel, as it's a contract, and with a consultant for legal services. This has been, as Councilmember Landrum said, we've been asking for two years since taking office to get support for council to look at an RFP, to look at the opportunities and options for in-house city attorney services, as we once had, or to look at contractual legal services, just to keep the firms we're using honest in what they're charging us and know that it's fair, and what the market is in the community around us, what our options are, and perhaps just even negotiate a new contract that might be more favorable. The financial issue is certainly front and center to myself, and not at the expense of compromising any legal services to our city, as I don't believe any of us ever would consider that. But I have a fiscal responsibility to the ratepayers, and I agree with the comments about how our billing is done and the oversight or lack thereof. And I think that that will be something we'll address moving forward when we determine, after evaluation, whether we will be doing an in-house or contract service. It'll allow us that. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve item 3A, and I'm going to ask for a voice vote on both of these.
Can I offer a friendly amendment to that?
Well, I need a second for--
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you, yeah.
I would agree that, I just wanted to add on to that, that we allow for a successor agreement with the exception of closure on ongoing items between either BWS and the interim city attorney, or between BWS and the city manager.
I would accept that friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Mr. LaPae?
Yeah, I'll accept that.
Thank you. With that, I'll ask for a voice vote, please.
Councilmember Echols?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember LaPae?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Moving on to 3B, approval of agreement with Robert Schultz for interim city services. City Manager Kimball?
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Council has just terminated a legal service contract with our prior city attorney firm, and this one is allowing us to appoint an interim city attorney for the city. And we have Robert Schultz here with us, and his resume is attached to the packet. He's legal service and span 40 years. He previously worked for the city from 1998 until 2013. Tonight, if council appoint Mr. Schultz, and we can start working on this little, we'll have some legal matters, and we can start working on it right away.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. And just for clarification, this is a contract, not an employee--
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, yes. This is a contract with independent contractor. It's agreement with independent contractor. Sorry.
Thank you for that clarification, City Manager Kimball. I will bring it back to council for questions. To my right, any questions?
No questions.
I have a question about number 13. It's, let's see, let me get there. It says, towards the bottom, it says that nothing in this section shall, however, preclude consultant from accepting other engagements with the city and/or representing clients residing or owning property in the city. And I just wanted clarification on what that, what all that entailed, both the city and clients residing in or owning property in the city.
Mr. Schultz, would you be willing to offer some clarification on that, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure and honor to be here. For that clause, I do do work for San Luis Obispo Legal Assistant Foundation. I'm a staff attorney there that provides free legal advice on housing matters. So some of our tenants sometimes are in Morro Bay, and sometimes I do get appointed to that. I plan on having few clients, and that probably would not happen, but it was put in there. If you have any concerns at all, though, we can just cross it out, and I can let San Luis Obispo Legal Assistant Foundation just say I can't take any tenants within the town.
It wasn't so much that. And then the city?
I'm not sure. It was probably taken from another contract. I don't see, I wouldn't have any other clients within the city. It would only be if it was a redevelopment agency, or there's other agencies that are affiliated with the city, but we could take that language out.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions to my right? Questions to my left?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a little nitpicky, but in clause 16, it's just sort of inconsistent with all the other clauses in that it doesn't have a title. And I think it's sort of a professional standards clause or something to that effect. I'm wondering if we could ask that there should be a title to that clause so that it's consistent with
We can certainly look into that, and then just crack that on our end administratively.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. So I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Schultz a few minutes ago. Thank you, Mayor, for introducing me to him. I have never actually met him before, and I think that I am one of the only members of the council that is not familiar with you or a whole lot of your work. So I'm hoping to have the latitude to ask you some more questions tonight. So for my comfort and that of the community who may or may not be familiar with your work, Mr. Schultz, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. Maybe first, I will start by saying that your experience is incredibly vast and impressive, and there are definitely areas of importance and challenges that we've had, especially in the areas of real estate. I can see that, as well as, you know, you being familiar with the inner workings of our city. I just wanted to comment first for you, when I speak of institutional knowledge, which is something that I've said from the dais many times, and my concern with turnover of staff and how that gets passed along, I was also not just speaking in terms of the day-in and day-out workings of the city, but also to previous negotiations and, you know, litigation and other things of that nature. So with regard to the two current jobs that you are working on right now, the San Luis Obispo Legal Assistance Foundation in Oceano Community Service District, are you feeling confident and comfortable that you're going to have time, the time needed, to work with us?
Two things I've already discussed with both those clients is, San Luis Obispo Legal Assistance Foundation, I've told them that I would cut back on my hours for the next three to six months. This is an interim agreement--
Okay.
--that I'd like to say that we could conclude and have a new city attorney that everybody agrees on in three months, more likely at six, but I know I can do it within that timeframe. So I've told them that I'm cutting back, way back on my hours for those six months. And the same in Oceano, where they'll have a contract that comes in front of them, that really all I will do there is go to their board meetings and handle some of their difficult negotiations. They'll bring in another attorney that will also do some of the day-to-day stuff.
Okay.
So both of those will be very limited hours if you approve my contract.
Okay, thank you.
I want to dedicate most of my time here to get this moving and get it, I don't want it to be delayed for very long.
Yeah, thank you for that. Also mentioned, in the contract is an area of conflict of interest, and it was mentioned that there didn't seem to be any concern at this point. Is that true?
Yes, yes. I don't have any dealings with any clients at all. Like I said, the only ones that I've had, I've had a few in the past couple of years since I retired with San Luis Obispo Legal Assistance Foundation for tenants of your city, and we represented them. But certainly, I'm happy just taking that language out completely, and for the time being, won't represent anyone within the city.
Yeah, I actually appreciate that. Thank you. And also, for the resume, it looks like it's been approximately 11, 12 years since you've worked for the city of Morro Bay as an employee. And in this case, you would be an independent contractor for us at a rate of $200 an hour, which is very reasonable, by the way. So if litigation did come up and we were to need special counsel to work with you, what's the process that you would take on that?
I'll come right to you and talk it with you, and if it's something I feel comfortable I can do, I will do it. But I'll be the first to tell you, more likely than not, we will have to hire outside counsel during this short period of time. And that's where the successor agreements can come in with the two firms. If they're already been handling and it's ongoing, I would not recommend switching that unless there's something that we discuss that needs to be switched. So those discussions will all be with you, and you'll be making that determination, not me.
Okay, thank you. You are a PERS pension recipient, correct?
Correct.
And so for the sake of, you know, just clarity, I know it was mentioned a little bit earlier, but I just would like to have the assurance that the contract that we're speaking about tonight is a limited one, correct?
That's correct.
And--
And it's an independent contractor, because there's no position within your budgeted allocations.
Right.
But I'm also seeking a written opinion on that to make sure-- to make certain that there's no issues between the city or I. But also you will be under the 960 hours for sure.
Okay, thank you. And, um, how confident are you that three to six months will be a satisfactory amount of time to assist us with finding a permanent full-time city attorney?
Barely confident with three months, absolutely certain within six.
Okay. And, and so I know we, we've discussed, uh, doing, uh, RFP in-house. We've talked about whether or not we should do an in-house attorney, some sort of hybrid. I think you're familiar with all of this, but I was just wondering what your thoughts are on this and what would your process be since this will be a part of scope of your work?
So I, my, my goal, and this would be talking with the city manager and you, would by the end of January, early February, have that information and that analysis of, of the comparison between the two in depth so that you can, can look at that and see, and then make that determination of which, which way you want to go or continue on both paths. You could actually do and issue an RFP for, uh, a firm and still looking at in-house. But I, I don't have any preconceived notions of whether it would be one way or the other is best at this point in time, um, because things have changed in 10 years. I do know, though, I've, I went for the last 10 years was in a, with a, within a town of, uh, population about 20,000, 25,000, and it was a sole, um, attorney with no help in that office except from the clerk's office. And so, you know, I, I've been in nothing but small city offices. Uh, I was part of the California League Small Attorney Offices where I have many contacts in other small cities, so we can, I can compare with them on, on some of the pluses and minuses, pros and cons, and bring that all to you so that you can make that determination.
Thank you. And, and you mentioning that reminds me that aside from, uh, working in the city of Moro Bay, I actually am from Saratoga and you worked in the city of Los Gatos. And, um, I'm sure you have stories to tell and I certainly do. So I, I just thank you. I really appreciate you, um, being forthright and answering my questions. And I wanted to just be sure that this wasn't an open-ended contract. And I'm, I'm satisfied with that and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Comments?
I just want to, um, I've had the opportunity to work with Rob Schultz back when he was a, um, employee of the city. He actually went to court. I went to court with him and he won the case. It was the, uh, Riddell family trying to build a home there at Cerritos Peak, if everyone remembers that. Uh, Rob did a great job for the city here. The thing that I also retained Rob, and he did it pro bono, me and Homer Alexander and Ron Reisner wrote the V22 initiative two years ago to try to get, um, our harbor infrastructure, um, passed. And he helped us write the initiative and guided us a little bit. So the one thing that I have known about Rob, he's very passionate about the city of Moro Bay. He's very passionate and making sure that whatever direction that we go in, we're going to be well, uh, staffed on a legal basis. So I have utmost confidence and very, um, um, I'm, I'm glad that Rob Schultz is here and he raised his hand. I think the timing couldn't have been better. So thank you.
Um, and I just want to thank, um, Mr. Schultz for, um, his willingness to, um, step in and, and help us out. And, um, I so appreciate, um, his institutional knowledge and, um, I, um, look forward to working with him.
Thank you. I am very grateful that we've got Mr. Schultz, uh, with us for this short interim time. I, I too had the opportunity to work with Mr. Schultz when he was the city attorney for the city of Moro Bay back in 2008-ish. I founded a nonprofit here to host the fireworks and had to deal with a multitude of agencies from the Coastal Commission down. And, uh, Mr. Schultz helped me navigate all those agencies with, um, a high degree of skill. And so, uh, ever since then, I've admired his, his legal prowess and, and knowledge. So, uh, I just feel very fortunate that we have, uh, an attorney of Mr. Schultz's caliber to assist us with this transition process.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards, comments?
Yeah, lastly, I would just say I look forward to meeting with you and discussing where we go from here. So, thank you.
So yes, thank you, Mr. Schultz, for stepping in for this void. And I appreciate the opportunity to work with you to look at how the city transitions and the options of in-house versus contractual services. And, um, I know we had, um, one of your, uh, fellow coworkers that was our interim finance director from Los Gatos, uh, Mr. Conley. And he was phenomenal. What a great asset, uh, carrying us over in our finance. And he spoke very highly of his working with you in Los Gatos for many, many years. So, um, I appreciate that. And thank you for accepting this interim position. With that, I will make a motion to approve 3B and ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. And I'll ask for a voice vote from the city clerk, please.
May I ask if we're, to clarify, if we're making changes to the contract as discussed?
As discussed, yes, please. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Councilmember Eccles?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember LaFaye?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. With that, um, I will wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, however you choose to celebrate. And again, thank you, Mr. Schultz, for stepping up. And we are adjourned.